Welcome, everybody, to the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee. It is 7:01 and I call the meeting to order. If everyone could please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, welcome, everybody. I know we're in a different setting here. I don't know, do we like this? I meant for future. All right. So, the first thing on our agenda today is we have a recognition. And I'm going to turn it, should I turn it to Dr. Rogers to introduce?
We'll tag team this. Thank you.
All right. So, I'm gonna turn it over.
So, we tried to trick one individual, but she's beyond tricking. So, we're here to spend a moment to recognize a phenomenal educator and administrator, Allison Reardon, who has been our coordinator for our Science Department for 15 years now. Has done a remarkable job. But recently Allison was inducted into the Massachusetts Hall of Fame for Science Educators. So, I want to, as I did with our administrators last week, I want to sort of speak to how significant this is. It's not as simple as a nomination. So, in order to be inducted into the Hall of Fame for Science Educators, which has been around for 30 years now, you know, you have to have a long and distinguished career in science, science education. But an individual who's worked for a minimum of 20 years in science education, I'd say has really contributed to the advancement of science and science education, not only in the school district, but at the state and national level. Someone who has been involved state and regionally, someone who's had an impact nationally, someone who has introduced new teaching and learning programs, not only to their own school community, but to the Commonwealth and beyond, which Mrs. Reardon has done on multiple occasions. Someone who's published, provides services to professional organizations, has evidence of enthusiastic and continued search for knowledge, a clear leader. So, this is something that is hard to obtain. And we're very, as I said to our administrators on Friday, when I tried to embarrass Allison, we're just very proud to have, and honored to have, a science educator leading our district like Allison Reardon. So, we want you to come up, if you don't mind, Allison. And do you want to take it from here?
Yep, and we'd also like to invite Principal Fry, Jessica Mead, and Ms. Jenny Nolan to the front as well. Just to say a few words on behalf of Allison and how well-deserved this award is.
Allison's really happy with us right now. So, I'm like, I'm here for redistricting. So, but in all honesty, when I was approached about writing a letter on behalf of Allison as a building administrator, we've worked together 15 years, it's a long time. And I think as leaders, it's great to hear from our teachers and her support staff, who were amazing, that Allison makes us better. And so, in leadership, the whole magic of it, in my personal opinion, is impact and implementation. And she's someone who's able to not only bring an incredible idea forward that exposes our students to remarkable opportunities, but she's able to implement and have the respect of her teachers. And she will be there in any crisis, any situation. We've had so many different things over the years together, but watching our different programs, I laugh when I think back to she wanted to do an MCAS boot camp, and I kind of laughed her out of my office many, many years ago. But then when she comes in about our Project Lead the Way biomedical program, that is due to the teachers and Allison Reardon. So, you know, we can name so many things, I could be here all night, but just as a leader, her people follow her, and they would follow her into a fire, which I think is really a testimony to her and how she advocates. And she has such an impact in our buildings. When South High was built, for example, when we would meet with the contract, Chris knows the architects, she could have been hired by AI3. Do not get a job with AI3 tomorrow. But her design, her vision, her ability to change within the situation is something that is second to none as a leader. So, I just wanted to thank her. And she does a tremendous job. So, we asked Dr. Mead, one of her staff, to be here as well.
This comes from a bunch of us, and I'm a planner, so I wrote it. I'm a science teacher for Plymouth South. Speaking for our department, we are incredibly fortunate to have Allison as our coordinator. Allison is always centered on what will be best for our students. For example, this year, we are focusing on increasing student voice in the classroom. Allison models what is best practice in her work with us, and then creates fun ways for us to work together and develop lessons. She is ensuring that our students have opportunities to stretch themselves academically in ways that are accessible to all. She takes the time to celebrate our students' successes by organizing events such as our white coat ceremony and senior biomed night. Allison has the utmost support for staff in our district, always reflective of herself as a leader. She sends out surveys asking what she can do to improve and help us grow as teachers and as a department. She recently started taking time out of her schedule in order to provide individualized help to staff. She meets with us once a month by subject rather than the whole department. She's always communicating conference offerings. When she comes to our classrooms, she never fails to check in with us, asking, "What do you need?" Personally, my answers have always been things like time, a brain, a clone. But when I do need something, Allison has always been open and available to problem-solve ways to make my teaching better. Allison has been an innovator here in Plymouth, bringing Project Lead the Way biomedical science and engineering programs to the high school, and Open SciEd to high school and middle school. She implements these programs carefully so our students have more choices. We are so thankful to have Allison as our district coordinator. She's an awesome science educator and leader, and all of us are better at what we do because of her. Congratulations.
The pressure. I am privileged to work for Allison and see what she does behind the scenes. She never stops working, she never unplugs, and she's always available. I'm inspired and amazed by her every day. And she is a wonderful boss, and she is so well-deserving of this award. Yes, you have to talk.
Thank you, everyone, really. I truly appreciate it. As I said to Dr. Rogers, it's hard to have a surprise, because when you're a good administrator, you look at the agenda prior to school committee to make sure you know where you are and what you need to do. It is, it was a very unexpected honor. A colleague in the state had actually nominated me, and I was kind of taken, didn't really realize what it all entailed. It is truly a testament to everyone who is in this district and everything that we've done together. I don't stand alone in any of this. So, thank you. That's all I have to say. I appreciate it.
Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have our CPAC presentation. And because we are so acronym-heavy, I'm gonna say that out for you, just so everybody knows what it is. It's the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And we are very thrilled and honored to have them here to give us a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Ashley, I'm gonna have you introduce your group.
Okay. So, I am Ashley Shaw, Velda Scott, and Rose Calderoni. We are the current CPAC board in Plymouth, which, like you said, is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. And if you want to pull up the slides, we can get started. Perfect. So, as I said, we are the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So, somewhere I should aim this specifically. Let's see. Can you do the next slide? So, this is what we are going to be talking about in our presentation. We're gonna let you know the definition of a CPAC, our mission statement that we personally developed for the Plymouth CPAC, our four main goals that we have as a CPAC, and what we think needs work in the district currently. Next slide. So, district collaboration. We have been really lucky as we're getting started as a, as a brand-new board post-COVID to have some district collaboration with Ed Clark, the Director of Special Education, as well as the two school committee liaisons that we work with, which is Louise Pozzano and Michelle Badger. And we really want to thank these individuals, because without them, we wouldn't be able to kind of get this going as we have currently. Next slide. So, we're gonna do the definition of a CPAC, what we are and what we do. Next slide. So, what is a CPAC? So, a CPAC is a Special Education Parent Advisory Council, again. In Massachusetts, we are required to exist. Not every state mandates that a CPAC exists in their districts, but Massachusetts is one of the states that does require our existence by law. And the laws that regulate that are Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71B, Section 3, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 71, Section 1C dictates the district's participation in the CPAC. And 603 CMR 2807-4, and 603 CMR 2803-1A IV, those basically mirror each other. So, MGL 71B, Section 3, and 603 CMR 2807-4 essentially mirror each other with very minor details in the language. Next slide. So, this is the actual language. I'm not going to read it all out to you word for word, but basically, it says that we are to exist, to be an advisory board to the school committee, to work with the district and with parents, to advise the school committee on what we think could work better and what we could do better in the district for students with disabilities. And then the other portion is that every year, the district must conduct a Rights and Responsibilities presentation with the CPAC, which has already been done this year. So, we're good there. Next slide. So, this is gonna be our mission statement. Next slide. So, this is what we had developed. The Plymouth CPAC is a parent-led organization mandated to exist by state law. Our mission is to connect with parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties within our district. Our purpose is to empower them to seek the necessary connections and supports for success. We wish to work collaboratively with parents and the school district to enable an effective partnership with increased family engagement, because that will work for everyone else. Next slide. So, this is gonna be our four main goals as the CPAC. Next slide. So, building community, inclusion, parent education, and communication and efficiency are our four main goals that we're working on this year. Next slide. So, building community, we're looking to create opportunities to connect and collaborate with other caregivers. It's a really isolating lifestyle sometimes, where you don't feel like other parents really understand what's going on, or that you can connect with other parents. And we want to reach out to that community. It's really hard sometimes to connect with them. So, we have done things like caregiver coffee chats. We're looking, looking forward, we're looking to do inclusive playgroups at some of the schools for some of our students. And what we need from the district to do things like that would be like buy-in from the district to help us connect with those parents, because obviously, by law, we can't know who they are, which makes that part really difficult, because we can't get a list of parents of students on IEPs or 504s. So, what we need from the district is, is help with that portion, because the district knows those students. So, connecting us with those parents is like a really big networking piece that the district can do for us in that regard. So, parent education. So, we want to focus on educational opportunities for caregivers to learn how to effectively navigate the IEP process, or the 504 development process. So, examples of this would be IEP workshops, specialized workshops for different learning disabilities. We just did a dyslexia presentation that was really awesome, and we had a few caregivers show up. So, disability inclusion-focused speakers and stuff like that. And what we would need from the district in that regard would be a light item in the special education budget, so that we can continue to host those important education events. So, that is what we were looking for there. Next slide. So, inclusion is one of our biggest things that we're looking for in the next year and obviously beyond. We're looking for increased opportunities throughout the district, both in the regular school day and outside, for school, you know, extracurricular activities and clubs, sports games, dances, ways to include our special education population in all of those things. Different ideas that we've kind of thrown around with that are, I don't know if anyone's ever seen like a silent dance, where all the kids go and they can put on headphones and hear the music if they want to, which is a really nice sensory-friendly way to include some of our population, where like kids can go, and if they don't want to wear the headphones, they don't have to, but they can still be included in that atmosphere. Another thing that we've gone, we've, we've met with some of the PTAs and gone to them to see if we can create sensory rooms when they do activities, quiet spaces when they do activities, so that if our population decides to come, whether they have, you know, sensory needs and things like that, or just need a place, a quiet place to take a break, sometimes especially at the elementary level, those events can be a little overwhelming. So, just creating, like opening a classroom where they can just go and sit, would be a really nice way to start getting our population involved in those activities. And what we need from the district on that would be just buy-in, you know, from the school committee, from the eventually town meeting, if we need to increase the budget. I know everybody hates those words. Trust me, I'm not a huge fan of them myself, being on the finance committee. But eventually, a level service budget is gonna, we're not gonna be able to provide the services that we truly need. So, what we're gonna need to look for and prepare people for is that eventually, we're gonna need to increase the budget. And we are 100% ready to back the school district and, you know, go to bat for, for those changes, if that's what needs to happen. Because we, we're gonna need to expand inclusion and expand our opportunities and ADA accessibility in our buildings for our kids to be able to participate in the way that we want them to. Next slide. Communication and efficiency. So, on our end, this is gonna look like we want to create a parent portal on our website, where parents, we can host FAQs, you know, what, what programs the district offers, what, what can I do, where can I find XYZ information? And just streamline that process for parents, so that we can put it all in one place, centralized location, where people know that they can go and find the answer that they need, or find a link to the answer that they need, instead of trying to navigate Google, or, you know, any other myriad of sources. And on that, we would also host emails for ourselves, so that they can, you know, click a button and connect with us, and find us that way. So, it would just increase communication and efficiency for us to connect with our population, so we can grow our community. Next slide. So, this is district improvements, and what we think the district can do better going forward. Next slide. So, these focus on these major things, compliance, staffing, inclusion, transparency, and transportation. So, with the compliance piece, we're doing fine right now, but we, there's always an opportunity to do better. And we would like our district to be great. So, while we're doing fine, we would, we're always ready to do better. And we think that, that we could make some improvements in, in the compliance portion of things. A lot of that leads into the next bullet point, which is staffing. Obviously, staffing is a hurdle that we need to get over. We did recently request, you know, any complaints that had been made with Dussie, a lot of them relate to staffing, which obviously is not the district's fault if the staff isn't, isn't there. But at that point, we would, we need to provide the compensatory services. So, staffing really ties into the rest of everything with the compliance piece, where we need more staff so that we can raise that bar on, on the compliance. So, obviously, everyone is having similar issues everywhere. It's not just a Plymouth issue that the staffing is not there. But we need to start getting creative about ways to attract and retain really good certified, adequately certified staff, especially with the increase that we're gonna see in the private sector, that Mr. Campbell was talking about a couple meetings ago, where they're getting an increase to retain their staff. So, in turn, that's going to alienate districts, public school districts, that don't have that added, you know, budget item for staff retaining and, you know, bonuses and XYZ benefits and that kind of stuff. So, we're gonna need to get really creative in, in ways that we can attract and retain our good staff to service our population. Leading into inclusion, there's extensive research on the importance of inclusion in the education, in the special education population, starting right down at the preschool level and working its way up. I think that one of the things that we're really missing the bar on is inclusion at the, at our lower grades. So, where we have our, our specialized sub-separate programs, we only have them in like, you know, the ones that are super-focused are in two schools. We have eight elementary schools that funnel into two middle schools. So, having those staff population only exposed in two, in two elementary schools rather than throughout the district, it, it alienates that population in middle school, because a lot of the kids then aren't used to there, like them being there. Then, you know, by middle school, when all the kids are hormonal and judgmental, they are, you know, oh, well, that's just the weird kid. And where in elementary school, you know, they, they get to make those connections on a more malleable level when they're more malleable. Their brains are more open to inclusion. And I think that that's where we're really missing the bars, on that very basic elementary school level, where we could be integrating our special education population a lot more. Obviously, that does tie back to staffing, but, you know, we gotta start somewhere. And so, changing the culture in the district, the way that we view special education, we're, we're obviously starting to make that shift. The unified basketball game that we saw come together, that was really awesome. Extending the unified sports to middle school, which I know is coming, is another great way to do that. So, just looking for more opportunities to extend that culture in the district, where we're supporting our special education students, where we're supporting that as a, as a whole district, as a whole community, I think would be really amazing. And then staff training is, is a big thing. So, staff training on inclusion, staff training on writing IEPs, which I know, talking with Ed Clark, he does have in the works. But, you know, focusing on those things throughout the district for professional development days and what have you would be really huge going forward. And then when we're hiring new staff, actively making sure that the, that those staff are comfortable having an inclusive classroom, having full inclusion in their classrooms, having students of all different ranges of support needs. So, when we're hiring new staff, we know that that's something that they're already open to, that we can include those students more with teachers that are comfortable having that population in their room. And then just living by the "you belong here" thing. You know, our students belong here too. And then special, having a clear entrance and exit criteria for our specialized programs, so that we know what our students are doing to meet those, you know, being entered into those programs, and then also knowing what our students must do to exit those programs and be included in the general education population would be helpful. The transportation piece is obviously another ongoing thing, much like staffing, where it's, it's hard to get a grasp on it. And we definitely understand that. We did hear that this year, we, was much better as far as communication with the district, van pool, and parents, so, or caregivers. So, we're getting better, but obviously, we still need to make some strides in pulling the, the transportation pieces together, which is obviously easier said than done, but something that we do need to work on. And then the last thing, the transparency, was one of the things that was brought up the most often to us. So, caregiver feedback leaves a lot to be desired in the transparency area. Many caregivers feel that the district could be more forward in regards to transparency, instead of families feeling like they have to hire an advocate, have to hire a lawyer, in order to get information that could openly be given and in order to get information that could openly be given in good faith. Those things are very costly to families and we should work more and harder to be more transparent with those families, so that they don't have to incur those costs. So that is the end of the presentation, if anyone has any questions.
Very great, great presentation, well, well thought out. And I, I love the fact that you, you added your ask. I don't think we've gotten that in a while. So that, thank you. That's really great and helpful. Dr. Swanson?
Yeah, that's a very good presentation. And I also, I very much liked your district improvement areas, all of them. And you, you touched on transportation and staffing, which are huge difficulties. And I want to speak to the staffing for a second, because you may or may not know, I want to say the title correctly. The Operational Services Division of the State Executive Office of Administration and Finance is recommending to the legislature that teachers in private special education schools get an 8% increase. And some of them already get a $10,000 signing bonus. That's gonna leave us in the, in the school systems across the Commonwealth at a loss. Because these students graduating, coming out of graduate school are gonna want to go to these very high paying jobs. This has not passed. As a school committee and as a superintendent has written to our, our representatives on Beacon Hill, we would, I would hope that your organization would do the same.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that, that we are more than prepared to go out to the different districts. There's 18 precincts and we are prepared to set up very, various volunteers and go out and actually educate people on exactly why we need more help and what it takes to actually educate. Because if we don't educate our population, I don't think people are actually looking at the reverse, that there is a cost too. So you have to look at the cost, why we need to educate versus if we don't educate that cost.
That's exactly right.
We definitely need you with the budget.
To add to Velda's point, we, we absolutely understand that it's a mutual relationship with the district. And as much as we want to make recommendations, my personal thought is you need to earn the right to make recommendations. And part of it is being collaborative in spirit. So investing in the school district and talking about why it is important to pay teachers and staff that we need what they deserve and why the budget is proposed as it is. And, and as you said, just to echo it, we are prepared. Right after this, we are catching our breath for the holidays. And we are gearing up with the parents who are amazing and responsive to prepare, plan to do so.
Thank you.
Ms. Fager and then Ms. Haywood?
I just wanted to say, I don't have any questions obviously, but I wanted to thank the three of you really for all your really, your hard work, collaboration. I think Rose's statement at the end was, I mean, what we've been working on for the last year and a half maybe, to get you all to where you are. So I just want to thank you so much for being so collaborative and working with us and being so receptive to helping us with our budget moving forward. So thank you.
I did forget one thing. So we had also included in our packet that we, a summary letter of letters. So we have 20 anonymous letters from caregivers in the district that they wanted to submit to the school committee. We do have a copy for the district as well. So we made a copy for each of the school committee members and then a, a copy, a folder for the district as well.
To add that, what we did basically is we sent out a request to parents to put a human face on the population, because we're three people and we're trying to cover a lot of ground and we can't possibly know everybody's case. And there's laws in place where there's a lot of privacy. So we asked people, whatever they, they kept sending us letters. And we said, whoever's prepared to give us a letter to give to you guys, please send it. Rose spent hours going over it and here's the result. You guys have it.
So I, I think it, just to, to add before we wrap, that, you know, being part of the CPAC means that you are, it's voluntary. So if you're a member or are on the board, this is voluntary. And it means that you are the caregiver or parent of someone who has an IEP or 504 in the district. Okay, just to add. And we think that putting a human face on what the experiences are like, not what we're saying they're like, but what we have been privileged to have had share with us. And we're pulling our recommendations directly from this. I think for several years now, the CPAC has done its best, but we have gone through a very difficult time. And so for the first time, there is a large group of parents and there's some hope. There's some hope for change. And so we really wanted these letters to give a picture of the experience. And we wanted to use them almost as a foundation to make some of our recommendations. There's also one for Chris. Chris, there's one for you. And you can keep that nice folder, yeah. Early Christmas present.
I think we have some more questions or comments. Ms. Haywood, did you wanna?
Mine's just a comment. I just want to thank you for your presentation and for always being comprehensive in terms of your knowledge of the law and, and the resources. I will honestly say from the time that I started on the school committee, I have been in awe of CPAC and, and, and their ability to navigate. Because I know as a parent of a child who, who had some special needs, it was difficult to navigate. And I remember meeting with the previous CPAC board and just, and I was in awe. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Campbell?
It's on? Yeah, it is. Okay, I got close to it. These recommended goals are clearly nothing that I would ever suggest. We're nothing but spot on. We always, compliance is something we can always get better, as you said. Staffing is something that we try to make sure that we don't just meet compliance with staffing, but we, we exceed that in many cases. And staffing's been a challenge in some cases, particularly with related service providers, which is always seems to be the case. My whole background is in special education. I was a special ed teacher, special ed director. Another one right here, two lifelong special educators. Inclusion is absolutely what we should be striving for in each and every moment, as much as possible, especially when they're younger. Like you said, I think, at the beginning, particularly when they're younger. So I welcome an opportunity to get to know all of you, to try to help bridge relationships with PTAs and really try to work even, not at the, just at the district level, but at the local level too, to have those opportunities that you talked about, some of the things that we've talked about tonight, and have those opportunities to truly include not just our students but our families. Because as someone who's been a lifelong special educator and also been a close family member to someone and a supporter for a family member who's gone through that process, which can be very overwhelming, I have that level. I don't have a full understanding. I have an understanding as a loved one of someone who has. So we need to do everything we can to make sure that we're supporting not just the students, but the families through that process too, which is, which is, you know, can be very taxing. So, thank you.
And I, I have a quick, does anybody else have anything that they want to add before I wrap up? And I, I echo everything that Ms. Haywood said too, because I've, I've had to navigate a 501 for my, oh, 501 for. This is my PTA hat, right? As well. And I remember, you know, the difficulty in that. And when I was a PTA state president, I worked really closely with the Federation of Children with Special Needs. So if I didn't go through it, I saw a lot. So I, I understand how difficult your, your roles are. And I always said that the parents that have children with any, any kind of special needs are always our biggest advocates, because they have to be. You don't have a choice. So I applaud you for that. But I just wanted to, to put this out there. I'm not sure, I know that Title One, well, you, you mentioned about the budget and the parent resources and how you wanted to, to get out to parents and you needed budget. I know that a certain percentage of Title One has to go towards parent, parent involvement programs. Can that be looked at? No?
Oh, there, now it is. It's okay. I understand. You're trying to control the feedback.
Is it 10% or something?
There are, there are a number of funding sources, whether it's through federal grants or our operational budget that we can, we're always look at and happy to look at in terms of opportunities and how we can help to work on family engagement, to work, to, to work on having opportunities for students. We've had lots of conversations, not only about expanding programs, but also looking at some more inclusive classes at the secondary level. They're different than we've done before. Finding other ways to include students that typically may not have been included in a traditional high school, such as this building, to connect with their peers. So we're looking at that in a, a whole host of ways. But yes, there's.
I just know a certain percentage has to go to parent involvement.
And Ed Clark has been very.
Well, it's a family, yeah, the family engagement for Title One, yes.
Ed Clark has been supportive of our need for a budget, but I, I just, my knowledge of the finance and how it works, I know that he's likely gonna need a line item for it, so I just wanted to mention it.
We just, we have, we have some big plans. You know, we, we want to build a community. We want to host field days. We want to build relationships with community providers who give vital mental health and basic needs resources. We want to develop a new brochure where you can see our faces and the faces of other families. A lot of our parents were confused. They thought the CPAC was the district. They didn't understand why it existed, who was part of it or what it did. So we're really trying to do two things, but I think a sense of community in every part of the word is how you address some of these need areas. You know, it's not us versus them. We want to pull everybody in, everybody in. You know, it doesn't work if you do it alone.
I have something, just something I'd like to add. The reason why we mention the budget is because we have pulled strings, the three of us, and used contacts from all over. And we are funding this ourselves right now, the three of us. So we are funding websites. We are funding business cards. We are funding banners. We are funding a portal that I've pulled in a contact from, best you don't know. And they, they're writing code for us, okay? And it's to get the FAQs out there. It is to meet our goal as a CPAC, to get information to parents where they understand the language of special ed. They understand what the programs are. So everything we've been asking and in the meetings with Ed, he's been helping, is giving us information that we can put up there, resources, and try and help with the transparency part, where we're getting this information out. But there's a cost and eventually Rose can't carry on paying for all the coffee.
I, we've had several caregiver events and I supply the eats and the very hot coffee. That is important, right? And babysitting, if we need, you know, we try to be flexible.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Swanson, I think you have one more.
Yeah, one more thing. Your vision statement is wonderful, really wonderful. I took a moment while you were, I, I flipped through some of these letters. And, and I'm gonna tell you that quite alarming. Some of these are quite alarming. Now, as you may or may not know, Dr. Campbell was the special education director in another lifetime. He's, he's, he is very empathetic. So I would certainly encourage, if you know some of these parents who wrote some of these letters, to encourage them to call Dr. Campbell, because there's some pretty heavy stuff in this package that needs to be fixed. So if you can encourage them to call him, I'm sure that the conversation would end up fixing some of these problems.
Yeah, a lot of, the, the reason that they're anonymous and that the reason that all of them are anonymous is that we did have a handful, or quite a few caregivers that were not comfortable releasing their information right now. A lot of people are just in survival mode. So I think that that's part of it. So we're, we're trying to establish trust with our population. So that was the easiest way to establish that trust with them and start that was to, in, you know, tell them that it's anonymous, this is gonna stay with us this time, and see if we can build trust with our community, but still provide that information to you. And especially being cognizant of time. We didn't want to read them all out loud.
Thank you.
Sorry. There is a, a group of parents that consistently speak to us and we've worked really hard to get them to do that. And it's all on social media. So they will come and speak to us and raise things and ask for help. So it's just starting in infancy and that's why we wanted to make you all aware of what's going on, on the ground, because we did not know all of this either. This is how we are learning as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have committee reports. And I know, Dr. Swanson, you have.
Oh, yeah, I just have a, I just have a brief update to the school committee. I want to tell you that our policy system is going through quite a renaissance. We are working with Jim Hardy from MASK and the entire policy manual, as you have known it, is going to change dramatically.
Yeah, I went out of order. I'm sorry. I just went out of order. My apologies. I'm looking at what I've crossed off. But we could, hold that thought.
I'll hold that thought.
I apologize. Thank you for keeping me. I'm go, I'm running by this, not here, so I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, you caught me by surprise too, by the way.
I know. I'm looking at the wrong thing. All right. Next up, we have our redistricting question forum. So before we get started, I'm just gonna let you know how, how it's going to work. Dr. Campbell's going to give a presentation. We've asked for questions ahead of time, so we're gonna try to answer all those questions as much as possible. And then at that time, I know Ms. Daly asked for signups for anybody that had additional questions. And if your question's already been asked, I, I know you're gonna signal to let me know. But I wanted to let you know too, this is not, we're not doing any public comment today and we're not, this isn't for comments. We're going to have plenty of opportunity for that. This is for questions. So we want to keep it moving along. So if for some reason you do get up here and there's a, there's comments, we're going to ask you to get to your question and go from there. Because we want this to go smoothly. We want to be able to answer your questions as, as quickly and accurately as possible. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Campbell.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Avery. So, yes, so we had a redistricting survey, which we pushed out about a week and a half ago. Through a video that was directly sent through Smore to families that were potentially affected by redistricting. So by potentially affected, it means any component that we left sort of unchecked, particularly around Scenario 1B as of last June. So try to send communications out regarding that. We also pushed it out through our social media platforms, put it out on our website. It's placed on our dedicated redistricting website. This PDF is also on our website, so that any hyperlinks in here can access some of the supporting documents that I might refer to. We did have 633 views of the survey that went out and 39 responses were submitted to us. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through any questions that were asked and then sort of my general response to date regarding that. And then at the end, I also have sort of additional information that I'd like to share regarding some of the, the numbers that we're looking at as well. So one of them, one of the questions asked was how will West be affected in terms of bus schedules, distances traveled and class sizes? So this had to do with any of the boundaries that were moving from Federal Furnace to West. So transportation would be handled in a similar manner. The proposed neighborhood or components, as we call them, some of those puzzle pieces where we sort of created boundaries are actually closer to West than Federal Furnace in those proposed changes. Class sizes would continue to remain consistent as they are across the district for the most part. Sometimes when we have some of our smaller schools like Cold Spring and Hedge, they either can be very large or, or small if we have a, a smaller population and fewer classrooms there. This question, my three children currently attend Manomet Elementary, even though we are aligned with Indian Brook under the out-of-district application. So these are families that have already been through an out-of-district application process in the past. I believe under 1B proposal, we would align to Manomet officially. And in that case, yes, for that individual, they would be aligned to Manomet officially. Is it possible to get a readout of where they will be aligned if this goes through for middle and high school years? As it seems that my sliver of land is different in middle and high school alignment than the Pine Hills alignment. So I looked, this, this question came from Brush Hill Road. And this street is part of the Indian Brook 2 component and would align with Manomet, PCS and Plymouth North High School if it were to go through. Is there a proposed change to high school redistricting, particularly for the Clark Estates neighborhood near Pine Hills? There was other comments that were made for some of these questions. The people were in favor of that. They wanted to move to South Plymouth or they didn't want to move. So I just stuck with the questions. In this case, someone was looking to redistrict at the high school level. But with the exception of the components shifting from Indian Brook, those two components shifting from Indian Brook to Manomet under Proposal 1B, all other components would remain in the same, in the same high school. So they wouldn't be shifting high schools at any, in any case. Are there any alternatives for staying in my current school? So the only thing I can say to this is having, if we have varied options, if we redistrict and have varied options for families, it makes it impossible for the district to transport students and to guarantee that. We have an obligation to transport students and wouldn't guarantee any necessary changes to improve our current challenges. Again, kind of the reason that we went into this whole redistricting process was declining enrollment at the elementary level particularly, about 14 and a half percent in the last 10 years, and a shift in that population. So we've seen a, you know, we're starting to get crowded at Indian Brook and South Elementary. Some of our other schools such as Manomet have empty classrooms. So really, the, the, the goal was to try to adjust that, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we, we have another, we need another kindergarten classroom, but we don't have a. a classroom to put the children in. We've already used up some of our specialist spaces for art and music, and they're going into the classroom, and we're running out of options particularly for some of those larger schools. "Will this affect the students in secondary schools, students transitioning from middle schools to high school next year and moving forward?" No. With the exception of the components, as I mentioned before, the Indian Brook components that could potentially go to Mannamette, all other components would remain the same secondary pattern. "My son goes to Mannamette already. As an out-of-district student, I'm hoping we can continue with Mannamette." Again, those students that are currently at Mannamette on an out-of-district application would become official and no longer considered out of district, and, you know, those have been sort of grandfathered in to anyone else. "My son will be a senior next year at Plymouth North, and the redistricting would mean he spends a senior year at a new school. The emotional turmoil it would cause would be devastating." Again, there is no change at the high school. There would be no shifts for our high school "After a plan is voted on, when will the redistricting go into effect?" So again, the goal last year and at the beginning of this year was to see if we could get the plan to go into effect for the 2023-24 school year, but this is something that we need to continue to discuss depending on what, when the plan is approved, and I'd like to sort of circle back to that at the end of this presentation, if that's okay. "Is there any possibility of leaving the middle and high school students on their current feeder pattern?" So again, there is no shift to our current students that are in their current feeder pattern. It's really with new students, only those potential moves from Indian Brook to Mannamette that would have a shift at all. "Is it possible to allow younger siblings to follow older siblings' feeder patterns into middle school and high school, so a family can all graduate from the same high school?" So I do think, you know, if there's a shift at the elementary that would cause a shift at the middle school and there are siblings, I think we should look at that. My recommendation would be to look at that. It would be very hard for a family to have students in two different middle schools, certainly, if that was something that came out of any redistricting exercise. We wouldn't have students that would, elementary and high school is a different story, but I think at the middle school, given, you know, the age span, it's something that we should look at, particularly for students that would be entering grade five, things to consider. "Will there be any consideration for IEP students to stay in their current school feeder pattern," I should say, "to eliminate added stressors?" So one thing I want to point out, that students in special education programs would remain in their program. So those students in some cases are already out of their neighborhood district many, in many cases, because, as we heard this evening, we, we have them in key locations. We try to keep them in their feeder pattern for north schools or south schools. All other special education services, inclusion services, related services are consistent across the district, and we do transition plans from grades three to grades four, from grades K to grade one. So those, those students would be able to receive the same IEP services and related services in a new school, should they, should they change schools. Also, siblings that are close in grade level remain in the same school. Could they remain in the same school? I believe, again, we would need to, to consider that, so that they could be in the same school, something I would advocate for, sure. "Will grandfathering with transportation be granted to current students whose neighborhoods would be impacted by this transition?" Again, grandfathering students really, it's very difficult, and there are other questions that are like this, but grandfather, having varied options isn't going to, it's going to make it very difficult to determine if we can make any substantial change that would lessen the impact of some of our larger schools, particularly those southern schools. So the only reason that I would even suggest making a redistricting recommendation would be if it were to free up some of the congestion that we have at some of the schools. This isn't something that we're looking to do to save money. This isn't something that we're doing to reduce transportation. It's only to, to free up the congestion, and I want to talk about that later in this presentation. "Will all students have the option to transition next year? My daughter is currently in kindergarten. If we're redistricting, I would like to move schools as quickly as possible. I'm in support of the redistricting plan." So if a proposal was approved, yes, that would be my understanding. "Will there be an open house of sorts for students who will be transitioning? If the redistricting plan gets approved, I think this would help transition process." So yes, of course, the district would work as a district and with all the elementary schools to provide open house and other special opportunities to assist students and families with any transition that may take place. This question is very specific. Why is Lawrence Road and Dorothy Road even being considered to be redistricted? It impacts less than 10 kids, so I'm trying to understand the logic by moving these neighborhoods. So when you look at that larger component where, where these two roads reside, there are actually 26 elementary students in that component, which includes those two, two roads. "Can this apply to kids who start middle school or elementary school and not the ones who are currently attending those schools?" Again, if we start with just new enrollments, that could potentially take six years to, to make any change, and at that point, it, it, it really doesn't have a significant impact on, on the school, or a significant change or improvements. "Could we supply with the actual maps with street details so we can determine whether or not we're affected?" So in, in all the presentations, there is a link, and it's up on the website, and I also put it in this presentation, which is also on the website now. So this document here that says "this map," that's a hyperlink, that will actually take you to the map, and you can see all the current district boundaries, and there's a, there's a little key feature on the side, and if you click on Scenario 1B, it will actually change the color and show the neighborhoods that would be shifted from, potentially shifted from one school to another. So that's all interactive, and you can zoom in on it, and it will show all the streets. And I'll show a sample of that here, because one of the questions needed that kind of "Have you considered widening the proposed redistricting area and giving those families school choice between South, Mannamette, and Indian Brook?" So this, this question, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but really, could we provide broader choice to multiple elementary schools to see if we can meet the needs of all families? I, you know, while I wish we could provide choice of that sorts, that would be something that would be very difficult to manage. It would be very difficult to transport, certainly, and we couldn't guarantee that, that level of choice across the district, particularly with some of the, the challenges that we have in some of our schools. So this is just a statement, but it also has a suggestion, which was kind of like a question part of it. So this is someone who agrees with the redistricting plan, though they think that families need more time to plan for the transition, asking the committee to consider pushing it back to the effective year 2024-25, so the families have more options and time to process that. And also, they believe if students can be grandfathered in, transportation should be provided, at least for one year. So I wanted to include that, because it was part of it. Sorry, I didn't click. Move forward. There we go. "I just want to clarify, does this mean that high schools are not being affected by redistricting? We only have one child left. The school system attends North. That is correct. Students that are currently at the secondary are not affected by redistricting." "What is the transportation plan for children impacted by redistricting, especially for those entering their last year of elementary school?" So the district would work with the elementary schools to provide, oh, sorry, that's the wrong question. The transition, oh, transition, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. I don't have my glasses on. I'm trying to read this. "The district would work with the elementary schools, again, to provide open houses, other opportunities, and activities that would assist students and families with that transition." "Is there a way to opt out? This family has students in fourth and fifth grade, so again, looking for, you know, some choice here, and really, again, starting with just new families, it would take at the elementary level literally six years to change the, the composition of that school based on the boundaries." So it's something that really wouldn't have an immediate impact. It would take a long time to see any kind of change there. "Are there planned improvements to sell Plymouth South Elementary?" So I wanted to answer this question, because we did talk about facilities early on last year too. So as you all know, may know, we did a comprehensive facilities assessment back in July of 2021. We have a lot of aging facilities. That's another concern of ours, not being resolved by any kind of redistricting plan at this date, but we are going to actively look at what our options would be for a new elementary school, hopefully, in the future. But to answer this individual's question, we have a number of capital improvement requests. Again, we put capital requests through to the town, and, and we'll see what we get. But some of those requests, just as some examples, much like our elementary schools, roofs, HVAC work, ADA upgrades, we're looking to come, you know, looking at full ADA compliance and what that would entail in terms of accessibility of our buildings and whatnot. So those are just a few examples for South Elementary. "Will this actually help long-term with all families moving in and within the town, or will there be need to do a subsequent redistricting?" Again, when we did this process, we went through this process with AppGEO, we asked them to look at a five-year projection and a 10-year projection. So all those numbers were based on what would we look like in five years and what would we look like in 10 years. AppGEO was our, our agency that we work with. RLS Demographics was the agency that they subcontract with to do all population, school enrollment projections, birth projections. I put a hyperlink into the report, which is also on our website. It's been there since last December, I believe. It, it's about 20 pages, but it really looks at that process and how they determined not only birth projections for Plymouth, but also looking at things such as our planning office and, and projects that have been approved for developments, all these houses and apartments that are coming in, and they have formulas that they look at in terms of determining how many students or school-aged students could potentially come out of those spaces. So that, this, this proposal was looking 10 years out when we were looking at that. "For kindergartners who were allowed to redistrict early, can you confirm that they will be able to stay in the schools?" We're not looking to move anyone who is currently in this, this schools. If they're, if they've been relocated to Mannamette, in this case, they would stay, stay in Mannamette. So this one needs an explanation with this slide, but can the district make sure not to cut neighborhoods in half? So this one had to do, this was a question from Florida Ave, was really trying to figure out, they thought it was kind of silly where the boundaries were cut off, and I don't know if you can see this here. Hopefully you can. Is that, if I move it, you can? It's very hard, it's hard to see, but you can see Florida Ave is that white circle part, but when you look at the boundaries on the bottom, we've really cut it off in the most logical place, really considering where those neighborhoods reside. So there's really, without going further south and pulling more neighborhoods, we really tried to cut that, those boundaries off, and we looked at that quite extensively, but it's really cut off in a spot where it doesn't break up entire neighborhoods. So in that one, in the case of Florida Ave, it's right in the middle of that component. "Will child be grandfathered into the current elementary school along the same lines? If a student is grandfathered into their school, will younger siblings be allowed to attend the same elementary school?" Again, if we allow grandfathering of all students, it would be very difficult to make any kind of redistricting. And again, the only reason we want to even propose anything or would propose anything is if it would free up some congestion, particularly in some of the schools that are overcrowded. This one wanted to know the rationale for moving Turnberry Drive in that neighborhood to Mannamette Elementary School. Saw it as an outlier, so I want to show that here. So this is off of State Road, right across from Powerhouse Drive. You can see in the top part of the component is Turnberry Drive. It's hard to see, but this is clear. The presentation is very clear. If you look at that, there are no neighborhoods to the north, the north being on the left side of the slide. There are literally no neighborhoods cut off there. That's where State Road is. So this is really like the, the only piece that is near Mannamette that doesn't currently reside at Mannamette Elementary School. So there's a reason why we look at that. The streets in this area are between two and one mile from Mannamette Elementary School, but currently go to Nathaniel Morton at about six to five miles away. And this gives you a better perspective. When you just look at Mannamette, which is in the orange, yellow is where Nathaniel Morton resides. Again, that's Rocky Hill Road on the top part of the yellow. That component is there. So there, there's the reason why. "Will all Mannamette Elementary kids go to the same middle and high school? Which one? Yes, Mannamette Elementary students would attend PCS and Plymouth North High School." "Will kids who currently attend Mannamette be able to finish elementary school if they redistricted elsewhere?" Students that are currently in Mannamette are not being proposed to go to a different elementary school. Again, we were trying to populate Mannamette Elementary, not move students from Mannamette. The students that are currently in Mannamette are very close proximity to Mannamette. There are other neighborhoods that are also in close proximity that attend different schools. "Will grandfathering be in place? Is consideration being made for children and families who do not want to switch?" Again, this is, this question's been asked a few times. Don't need to read it again, but I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, you know, their questions were heard. Although I agree that it's important to give everyone an opportunity, equal opportunity, have you considered conducting a survey? So this one really is asking, if I understand this, if everyone could transport students themselves, would we allow them to go to a different school of transportation taken off the table? Again, it's not about, it's not about the transportation. It's really about looking at, when we proposed looking at redistricting in last August, it was more about the population challenges we have in some of the congested schools. So it really had nothing to do with the transportation. We're obligated to transport. It's really about that declining shift in enrollment in some schools and the congestion that we're receiving at some. I can give an example. At, at Indian Brook right now, if, if we needed another elementary classroom, we would have a hard time accommodating that. So that's a challenge that we have. "What support would be offered to children who are being redistricted?" Again, we would work with all of our administrators to provide any kind of open houses, special opportunities, and, and social connections with the students and their families. "Why are they not considering beginning this with new students and, and leaving current students in place?" Again, I hope that that's clear, why that would, it would be too difficult to do that way. We would literally be doing it for about six years, and it would be very challenging to, we'd be transporting, we certainly would be adding a lot of transportation in that case as well. "Why can't you implement the redistricting with the kids heading into kindergarten next year and not involve the kids who are currently enrolled in the Plymouth school system?" Again, this is the same response that I had to the last question. Would you feel, so this one, this was really more about, well, playing a disruption in the child's social, emotional well-being, and I felt the need to include this, because it's not a specific question regarding the redistricting, but it's something, just to be clear, you know, this is not something, I certainly, in August, when I made the proposal, it's not something that I look forward to making any kind of a recommendation. I just feel as superintendent, it's my obligation, when I, when I know that we have challenges in some of our schools where art and music is being pushed into the classrooms, that they're on the, the verge of not knowing where, where to put the next kindergarten room, should we have an influx of kindergartners to place them without having classes in the 30s, if we would do that, which is not what we want to do in Plymouth? I think we've, we've really tried to keep our class sizes in the low 20s, particularly in the primary grades, the primary elementary. So it's not something, it's not something that we take lightly, and of course, I mean, I, I know many people who could potentially be affected by redistricting options, and it's not something that we take lightly, certainly, and this is why we do it so infrequently. And this is why we only do it when we know we have a viable option that's going to help relieve some of our schools. And, you know, so if we were to do this, if we were to come up with an option that's viable and, and, and is going to help us as a district, we would, of course, support the social, emotional well-being of our students. I think about, we have a lot of, and I use the example at PCS. I know it's different, but it, it's, it's relevant in a sense that we have six elementary schools, for example, that for example, that feed into PCIS is one of our schools. And many times, it's having a student, having multiple students have gone through that middle school. Many times, you're not with any of your peers from your classes, or you might not even be with a student from your school in some cases. We try to make that not happen, but we also, you know, I think what's really important to us is that middle school to high school consistency, particularly because we see a lot of changes in expanded relationships once they hit middle school. So we certainly don't take it lightly, but we, and we want to support our families and our students in any kind of redistricting. This is not something that we look forward to having to consider at all. Could you still be considered for South Middle and South High School for Clark Estates? So this is one, we had a lot of, I think we had about a half dozen inquiries last year about wanting to go to the southern part of town from the Clark Estates. So while, you know, pragmatically and logistically, I happen to agree, it's close. It makes sense in terms of geography that, you know, that you have a school that's right down the street. You have, you know, a couple of, an elementary school and a middle school that are much closer. It's just not an option that we are, we could do. It just, we went through that analytics last year, and it's something that we would see. Our South High School actually wouldn't be able to handle it after several years. So, I mean, it would be, unfortunately, having, again, multiple options for multiple middle schools and multiple high schools would just be too difficult for us to manage and to support. Will grandfathering be allowed? Again, this is something that, with the exception, if we were looking at our fifth graders and keeping siblings together at certain levels, is something that we would have to be very careful about because varied options are going to make it very difficult for us to implement any kind of change. Will a bus be available or do parents have to provide transportation? Students that are maybe redistricted would be provided transportation similar to how they would previously. So we're responsible to support transportation. We could continue to do that. Why is a small group of kids having to switch to Manomet Elementary then have to go to South Middle where they would only know a couple of kids? So we're not expecting Manomet students to attend Plymouth South Middle. I think there was some confusion there. I think there are some students maybe that went to South Middle, that would have gone to South Middle, that wouldn't if they became Manomet students, but the question was worded this way. So I wanted to answer it. Can my third grader be grandfathered to complete fourth and fifth with his peers? If so, can she take the bus from the street next to ours that is not being redistricted? So we've had a lot of conversations about this. We know that, you know, depending on where your neighborhood is within, within the district boundaries, you're going to have a school, you're going to have a bus that go, maybe even goes down your street, it happens now, where they go to one school and another bus goes to another school. We see that, particularly on the outskirts of our district boundaries. So that's something that we're always going to experience, depending on where those boundaries are. But, you know, having varied options, again, it makes it impossible for us. We can't, again, it comes down to not the transportation, but it's more about making that effective change that would relieve the schools and not put us in a situation where we'd have much larger class sizes in some school or be forced to do something even more significant, which we had to do about six or so years ago at Hedge when we had to move the kindergarten to a different school for a year. So we're trying to avoid things like that when we make a change. This one, question, want to know, why is this taking so long? It needs to be done, just do it. They, you know, they thought that we just needed to make a decision and certainly, you know, while we don't want to belabor anything or drag anything out, because sometimes that can create more uncertainty or anxiety for people when decisions are made. I understand that, but, you know, there are several families that still have questions. And I think that as, I can speak for the committee, we wanted to make sure that we answered questions. We really looked at things carefully before making any kind of final recommendations. This one had, is specific to the Pine Hills, just asking, please reconsider removing the Pine Hills community and not having them part of the redistricting. Saying that there's a very small amount of students that attend the North Schools and PCIS at this time. So when you look at those two, these two components that are really considered Pine Hills components in the redistricting plan, and there are currently 70 elementary students. So it may seem insignificant, but it's a good amount of students that are in those neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods are, you know, again, they're, they are twice as close, depending on where you live within those components, to several other elementary schools. So it's, it poses a challenge, it poses a challenge for us. And we understand that, you know, change can be difficult, but, you know, we're trying to look at, as we do this, we have to think about neighborhoods that make sense, that are in close proximity to the schools. And it's challenging. We have, you know, Manomet and Indianbrook are a mile and a quarter apart. So it's very challenging to find those boundaries. So do you go past Indianbrook to populate Manomet? Or are you going to draw down Beaver Dam Road, which doesn't go past Indianbrook? So you, so again, trying to be as transparent as possible to the thinking that went behind this when the committee looked at the components, really trying to make things that made more sense. Close proximity, but not also going by another school. So what, before we take, if it's okay, through the chair, I also looked at, again, we went back to, we looked at the redistricting, we were looking at this for a couple of reasons. Declining enrollment at the elementary and a shift in the population. You know, some of the schools were larger at one time. Manomet Elementary School had well over 300 students when I first came here, well over 300. It's not the case now. They're in the twos, low twos. I asked our data office to pull all of the existing students that are in the components that are in question in Scenario 1B and asked them to tell me next year, for those students projected for K1, 2, all the way through 5th grade, how many students are in those components? And what would the shifts be to Indianbrook, Manomet, Nathaniel Morton specifically, as well as the other schools, to see what that would do? And as I've said here, our, we have room at Nathaniel Morton. That's not a question. We're not congested at Nathaniel Morton. We certainly have room at Manomet. We don't have room at Indianbrook. South Elementary is pretty tight, too. When we look at the number of students at Indianbrook that would, for next year, that if they were moved through Scenario 1B, would shift to Manomet, it only brings them down by, I'm going to give you an exact number. It brings them down by 47 students. But when you look at, so that sounds like, oh, that's, that may sound significant enough, right? But when you look at the grade projections of those students for next year, you wouldn't even free up a section, a classroom section. So, which makes me, again, we may want to wait. We may want to wait and look at this in '24, '25 to see what that would be. I don't want to move students unless it's going to be, yes, we'll populate Manomet Elementary School. It's a wonderful school, and I think, I truly believe we would do a good job with the transition. But we're not going to, we're not going to have any added benefit in terms of freedom of space at Indianbrook, which many of the members here have went through. It's not going to resolve that. We're not going to have an extra classroom as a result of this because the students are spread out across those six grades. So we're not going to be able to drop a section by doing that. So I question whether or not it's something that could, much like the conversation we had when we initially looked at Hedge Elementary School. You know, it's, it's a different conversation, but it's similar in a sense of, do we need to do anything now? Yes, it would adjust it, and over time, I think it would improve. Like, we did the five-year and 10-year projections. If we wanted to wait a year, I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to hinder us in any way. The only concern I have, and again, it doesn't, by moving those Indianbrook students to Manomet, we're not relieving Indianbrook enough. And I am concerned if we have an influx of kindergartners, what that, what we're going to need to do at Indianbrook. And we would work, obviously, with the administration on that, but, you know, I don't know if we have another situation like we had at Hedge Elementary years ago when we had the need for 13 classes, but we only had 12, and we sent students to West. I just wanted to share that bit of information as well.
Okay. All right. So we have other questions. I don't know, does anybody, the three people that have signed up, have your questions been answered or do you still have questions? Yeah, if you just want to go up there and just state your name and address and go ahead with your question.
Hi, Cara Tompkins. I live on Indian Ave, and I just wanted to make sure my kids are in middle school and high school, so the redistricting, they wouldn't be impacted. So the people who change, the elementary kids that change to Manomet, if you do do it, would that neighborhood then go to PCIS in North eventually, like six years from now?
Thank you for that question. So the recommendation would be if we redistricted an elementary school, that they would become a part of that feeder pattern. So those neighborhoods that were once Indianbrook that became Manomet would then follow the feeder pattern that Manomet has for many, many years, which would be PCIS and North High School. Correct?
Okay, great.
But not for students that are already at the secondary level.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Yeah, you want to just go up there and? She's on the list. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Am I allowed to ask two questions or?
Yeah, you can.
So I have six, but I'll only ask two. I'll keep it short.
State your name and your address first.
Sure. Liz Gagnon, 10 Edgewood Circle.
Thank you.
So I guess the first question is, you know, I know this process started in April with a recommendation to close Hedge Elementary. The recommendation's since changed multiple times. What I would like to know is how come overcrowding at Indianbrook wasn't an issue back in April? The focus in April was closing hedges. How did we arrive where we are today? Also, moving high school, middle school students are now off the table. Why is that, as the focus seems to be solely on the elementary school level?
Do you mind repeating that second part?
Sure. So, let's see. So, yeah, basically, just, you know, like I said, the focus back in April was, you know, closing Hedge Elementary. What I like to know is how come overcrowding in Indianbrook wasn't an issue back in April? You know, the main focus when this all started was closing hedges, and I'm just wondering how we arrived at where we are today.
Yeah, so we looked at a lot of scenarios. Hedge was an option. It was an option, and I think that was the facilities assessment that brought that up to the table, and we owed it. And I, you know, I, that building, if you've walked that building, it's very congested. We currently can accommodate the classrooms if we need to, but in terms of inequities, in terms of related service spaces, art and music classrooms, no office spaces to be heard of, it's, it's not an equitable learning environment in terms of the physical space in comparison to a lot of our schools. So that's why it really rose to the top. In addition to when we did the facilities assessment, which I referenced earlier in July, knowing that we have very aged buildings, and at some point, we're going to need to make some decisions that involve millions and millions of dollars, which we advocate for every year. Typically, we were asked for 13 capital projects and we get five. So with eight elementary schools competing for a lot of dollars, we have to look at, we have to look at that as well. So when you have a school of 210, I think they're 214 right now, when we're declining enrollment and we could shift students, reduce the need for about $5 to $6 million in capital projects that could go to, towards other aging buildings, such as, you know, we had Nathaniel Morton's roofs, at which we had an emergency procurement. We have three other roof projects that are in the queue. That's why that was one of the options that was there. We've always been concerned, and if, at the redistricting committee meeting, you would, you would have heard that about the concerns with the congestion at the elementary schools. And in fact, it was one of our options, was to move all the 5th grade out of Indianbrook and all of the 5th grade out of South Middle School. So it was something that we did talk about in terms of the enrollment issues. And that's, but we took that off the table for a couple of reasons. One, programmatically, while it would relieve a lot of, it would relieve some space at those schools, it's not something programmatically, it would, it would create, in my opinion, some inconsistencies in terms of curriculum opportunities by having 5th grades from two elementary schools at our middle schools. It was like that when I first came here 15 years ago. It worked, but it's not ideal. So again, we threw out a lot of options, and I think we're trying to find the option that works best for the community. So it was something that was considered, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one last question. If you, if you have room at Nathaniel Morton and Manomet Elementary, but not Indianbrook, I guess my question is, then why are you moving people out of Nathaniel Morton, specifically the Pine Hills and Clark Estates?
Again, it's because of how close they are to Manomet. So when we look at, if we were to look at, yes, Nathaniel Morton has space, but we also went through a study recently, which I'll be sharing in December with the school committee. We did an existing condition study of all of our schools. It's a great, it's a great building. It has a lot of spaces. There are some spaces that, we have some 4th grade classrooms, for example, that are in spaces that are much smaller than some of our larger spaces. So that, we do have some capacity there. Down the road, if we were fortunate enough to get another elementary school in North Plymouth, I think we would eventually need to utilize that school to support those students. So if we had a declining enrollment and we kept that building smaller than its capacity typically it was, we may be able to transition students there in the future while doing construction at another building. But the reason why we're looking at that particular school is we have students that are, you know, six and a half to eight and a half miles away from Nathaniel Morton and three miles, or two to three miles, in some cases, one and a half miles, close to Manomet. So it's really geography in that case.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? No? It looks like that's all the questions. Does anyone else from the committee have anything that they want to ask or add? No? Okay. So we, we'll have more opportunities to discuss this. This was just, you know, it was great that we could get the questions answered. And we thank everybody for coming out, and we thank everybody for all your letters and your comments, because, you know, we want you to know that we are all reading them and we're all taking everything into consideration. And just to reiterate one more time, nothing has been decided yet. So, you know, don't read into any of this. We haven't, we haven't gotten to that point yet. So thank you, everybody, for coming. Okay. So next, we will, we will go on to the committee member reports, Dr. Sorensen. And we'll let you go first.
I appreciate that. I'll make it really brief, just to tell the committee that the policy subcommittee is working with Jim Hardy from MAS-C. that the policy subcommittee is working with Jim Hardy from MAS-C. And our entire policy manual is going, going through a very major renaissance. And we are adopting the National Educational Policy Network, NEPN. We are adopting it as a way of formatting all of our policies. And it is, it is the network that DESE is now recognizing. So, if they ever came down here for an audit, we would be actually, you know, in line with what they're used to seeing. As we do this work with MASC, we are all heartened to know that the way it works, we'll take any given policy, and we put our policy down on the table. We then look at our handbooks to see how the handbook relates to the policy. We look at contracts to see how the contracts relate to the policy. We will look at memorandums of agreement. We will look at the charter. And lastly, we will look at all the legal updates relative to that policy. So, each policy is going through a major change in order to bring everything in line. So, when it comes to the committee, each policy, as it comes to the committee, will be in this new format, and you can rest assured that every written paragraph in the district pertinent to that topic will all be in line. Right now, we have something in the student handbook that is different, that's in the policy handbook, that may be different in the contracts. Everything is gonna be in line with the help of MASC. The first two things we are going to do, and I'm going to just announce to the committee, we're being recommended to change school system to school district. So, the first major change across all our policies, school district, uh, the school system will be dropped out, and school district will be put in place of that, because that's recommended by DESI. The other one that recommendation is the pronouns that we've been troubling over. So, we are going to avoid use of pronouns totally. We're gonna refer to the student, the superintendent, the parents of the students, the parent. We're, they'll be, we're gonna not use pronouns so we don't get caught up in the, the, the nomenclature of pronouns as they exist in our society today. And so, this is a long process. We'll be bringing policies to you, one at a time, and eventually have a updated, thorough policy booklet. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything for committee reports? I know, Mrs. Jackson? Is it a separate item? No, you can go, yeah, go ahead.
So, for PYDC, we did a mini-training on nicotine withdrawal, which was very helpful. It, you suggested a lot of resources to the teachers and the students and that you might not be aware of. It wasn't something you had experienced before. And we had originally had a flyer in our previous meeting about pressed pills and how with the rise in fentanyl, people are putting them into pressed pills now. And so, people may be thinking that they're buying something, you know, to help with study or something like that. But really, fentanyl can really be put into anything now. And there was a suggestion made there by Carolyn Rains that we get posters made of this and dispense them and have them available at the school so that kids are more aware of this, because she thought this was a very useful piece. And I, I agree. And the one, the biggest thing that came out of this meeting is that when they did the prevention surveys of kids that they do in eighth grade that show, you know, where they fall in different life possible risk categories, the anxiety sensitivity guideline shot up by two hundred and fifteen percent at PCIS and two hundred and eleven percent at, from the South Middle School. So, it was a huge skyrocket, skyrocket, more than we've seen before. And as far as sensation-seeking, which is the other side of the spectrum, there was virtually zero on, at both, which also says something to me. So, there's gonna be further research to look into analyzing that information and see what exactly that means. But it definitely was a marker on there that I think, you know, we need to be aware of.
Wow, great, thank you. Does anybody else have any other committee reports? Mr. Pizzano and then Mrs. Badger? I mean, Ms. Badger.
Yeah, I got a few. First, I attended the South High School White Coat Ceremony last week. Always great to see, see that I know Ms. Jackson attended the, the one at North. I'm sure if anyone else is there with you, but yeah. Those are always, it's always great to see those kids make that transition. And also, the North High School NHS induction last week. Again, just nice to see those kids make that accomplishment. Also, attended a really great event at South High School as part of a book tour for Matt Cappucci. For those who don't know the name, he is a, become a pretty renowned storm chaser, and he's now a meteorologist in the DC metro area, which is obviously a huge, you know, TV market. But Matt attended Indian Brook and then PCIS. Then unfortunately, it affected over to Sturgis down the Cape. But, you know, he's, he's still a Plymouthian, and he's a product of our system. But he, this kid is just absolutely amazing. He's only about twenty-five, you know, went on to attend, basically, a combination program at Harvard and MIT. And it's just like, you meet this kid, you would not believe how much he's done at age of twenty-five. So, it was really great. There's a lot of local elementary kids ended up attending the event. He was just very inspirational, so it was great to be able to attend that. And finally, Ms. Jackson and I, and actually, Dr. Blaisdell as well, attended the West Pyjama Night a couple of weeks ago, which was great. We read the students. They successfully collected thousands of pajamas for kids in need. So, really, really fun, uh, event, so. It's been a busy couple of weeks.
That's wonderful. All right, Ms. Badger and then if anybody else?
Okay. I just wanted to start off by, um, I went to the Laramie Project presentation on Thursday, or the, I should say, play. And it was incredible. The, I had the opportunity, because they allow No Place for Hate, to have a booth there before our, before the show. It had the opportunity to talk with some of the actors. And the joy that they had about being able to share that message and educating their fellow school members was just wonderful. And they were so excited to have people there. So, it, it was just really refreshing. For something that could have been viewed by many people as very controversial, it was, it seemed to be really taken on and with their big hearts and just to improve their community. I heard many of them say they just hope that it's the start of a conversation. And I said that too, you know, I hope it is. You know, we've got all kinds of organizations in town, in our schools, that can hopefully help continue that conversation in our community. But it was, ooh, heart-wrenching to sit there and just sob a little, you know? So, but it was incredible. So, the other pieces, I did go to the wellness committee meeting, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, it feels like. But it was a nice opportunity also to get a presentation from Pine Hills Fats. It's like Pine Hills Trail Recreation.
I don't know what the A is.
Pine Hill Association, maybe? I, I don't know. They were talking about their hope to do the, uh, kind of like Kingdom Trail-like piece in Plymouth using the, the Pine Hills property or the property of the nuclear power plant. We also got a reminder that November, they're asking you to do a mile a day for, if you want to, and it's a chance for you to think within and be thankful what you're thankful for. And we did have our view of what Dr. Sorenson shared with us before with the I Can Bike Camp and how wonderful and of experience, and got to see that video. So, it was really nice to see what are, what we're up to, as well as some really great presentations from other aspects of, you know, the wellness community at the schools, from the Yellow Tulip Project to just what else is gonna be happening with getting more parents involved in that wellness piece of, in the district. So, I think that's it.
Great. Now, Dr. Sorenson, you had something else to add?
I just one quick one, but Michelle, I, we really get touched by many of the things we do or get to do with the children in the district. It's so touching. I just wanted to send a congratulations out. In September, well over a hundred high school soccer teams started in the Commonwealth, and this school, Plymouth North Boys, made it to the final four. Such a great accomplishment. Never been, hasn't, they've never gotten that far since probably thirty years ago or forty years ago. So, I just wanna send that out, thank you.
Great. Does any, um, go ahead, Mrs. Jackson?
I wanted to add one more thing from PYDC, just because I think it was something that people should know about. So, the Y was there, and they are going to be doing a giving tree this year. But not only are they doing a giving tree, but they are also allocating, doing something so that they can allocate funds for kids to shop for their parents from Algonquin, pairing with them. So, if anybody, I know it's not specifically from the school per se, but if anybody wants to be a part of that, I just wanted people to know.
The Y was there as well. Great, thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything? Before, um, the one thing that I want to, I feel like, I was in, I was away out of state last week, and I missed so many things. But I did attend the Laramie Project, and I just wanted to echo Ms. Badger's thoughts. And I think that in light of the recent tragedy in Colorado Springs, I think it's so important that we educate ourselves and continue to work to support all of our students. And I'm so thankful that Plymouth Public Schools is going in that direction. And I've, it's something that I've always, the Laramie Project goes back for me a long, a long way when I got involved in advocating for LGBTQ youth. That's kind of the start of it. Lexington High School put it on, and I was involved in protecting the students that were getting attacked by hateful people. So, it was really awesome that I got to finally see it. And I just, you know, just wanted to echo, I, I did have some parents tell me that they wish that it was shown in school, mandatory to the kids. So, I've, I've had a lot of comments that way, like, it's, it's very good that we did it. And I brought my mom with me, and we had, it was just very heartw, you know, it was great, and the kids. The kids were amazing. So, congratulations to Plymouth Health for putting on that play. And with that, if nobody has anything else, we'll go to the building committee report. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, we did meet, actually, last week. Couple of good things. The, the work done at Nathaniel Morton is nearly complete, and everything's moving along well. And they had a good, they've got the students involved with the contractors. They had a day, and they kinda showed them what they did and whatnot, and I heard that went, went very well. So, that project's going well without, no issues. I think the plan for the work at the three high school, oh, not high school, uh, elementary school roofs are still on pace to happen this summer. So, that's the good news. There was a comprehensive plan put together by the town outlining projects that they need to do now and do in the future, a ten-year plan, very comprehensive plan. Our facilities director was there. Mr. Blaisdell was there as well. And they went over different projects, so it was great to see that detail. The only sad part is, is that there's probably about twenty million dollars in projects that need to be done, and about eight million dollars in the kitty to do it. So, there's some, um, some challenges ahead. Also, it could affect capital projects for all departments, including the schools. So, there is a concern there. So, it was a good news, bad news type of thing. But I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. And next up, we have personnel reports. Mr. Choffey?
Yes, good evening. I think Brian's got me, there we go.
Yeah.
This evening, I do, I'd like to share with you that we had two parental leaves approved, one medical leave approved. We received two resignations. And then we also approved one certificated hire and three classified hires.
Thank you. And next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Brief tonight, but just first, League of Women Voters asked me to sit on a public panel discussion, which will happen soon after our initial budget presentation, December eighth, seven PM, in the Great Hall of Plymouth Town Hall. This is really to discuss with the townspeople, you know, core issues that affect taxes, to answer any misconceptions about school budget, to, to really inform the general public about that. It's gonna be moderated by Mr. Flaherty, Patrick Flaherty, former school, um, school, excuse me, select board member. And then, again, that will happen on December eighth. So, I look forward to taking part in that. As we talked about the OSD report last time and the forty percent, fourteen percent inflation factor that is being proposed, my letters have been received by both state representatives, Miratori and Lanatra, as well as Senator Moran. And I have a meeting set up with Senator Moran and other local superintendents after the Thanksgiving weekend. So, I look forward to sharing more of that and answering any questions that, that she may have in her team. Our final budget reviews are taking place. We had meetings today. We will have additional meetings on Monday of next week to fine-tune some things. And, you know, our, so we're scheduled, as a reminder, our next school committee meeting, December fifth, is dedicated to the FY24 budget presentation. That will be back at Lincoln Street. And then, just a reminder, December fifteenth, if you're available to do another round of school tours, I found that very, I enjoyed that, and I hope that you enjoyed the first round that we did of four of our elementary schools. These will be focused at the secondary schools, starting at eight AM and probably wrapping up by two PM. I can send another invite if, if, if needed. This will be focusing, again, on our four secondary schools, as well as our preschools, since we'll be at PCIS anyway. So, it would be nice, and it's always fun to go through the preschool. So, I'll give you a more specific timeline as we get closer to there. Couple more things. I mentioned this during the redistricting presentation, AI3's existing condition study. So, they've done their analysis for us, really looking at, they looked at our facilities assessment thing we did. They walked our buildings. Dr. Blaisdell took them through every single space at every single elementary schools. I joined them for a portion of that. They've done a comprehensive analysis of our buildings, and we will present that information to you December nineteenth, school committee, meeting, and, and talk about some of the things that they said were viable options for us, as well as how they see the conditions of our buildings, not only for a capacity stand, uh, view, but also MSBA standards in terms of instructional space, which is important. And then, lastly, just to share, last Monday, I had an opportunity to join a wonderful English Learner Parent Advisory Council meeting, a planning meeting, really, at Nathaniel Morton. We had seven families that showed up, very eager, very excited to not only take part in an EL Parent Advisory Committee, but help lead the work. And that's what we really, we talk about that tonight, right? With CPAC, we talk about that with PDA. We talk about that with our family organizations. Really empowering our families to support us, but to, to, to sort of be the leads and, and, and help be the voice of change and support. So, we had a great, we, we were there an hour longer than scheduled, had some great conversations, and we'll continue to have future meetings. We haven't scheduled one yet. Everyone wanted to look at their calendars and get back, but we, we've got a social network now that will continue. But really, we had an interpreter there to support us. But it was great, great discussion. And we have some volunteers that are already eager to take on some leadership roles. So, that's the last of the report, and just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving weekend. It's coming up.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Campbell? All right, next up, we have unfinished and new business. Is there anything for unfinished business? No? Does anyone have any new business to bring before the committee? No? Okay. Next up, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? No? All right, great. So, I will entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, Ms. Badger moves.
I second Ms. Badger's motion.
Mr. Pizzano, seconds, any discussion? And we cannot vote, because it cannot be projected up there. So, we are gonna do a roll call vote for the approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzano?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And the consent agenda has been approved. And with that, it is eight forty-five, and the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee is adjourned.